Hey, we should all be live.
All right. We've got here. Call this the order of seven oh one, even though my computer wants to say it's eight oh one, two. Is something in a roll call?
Mayor Paul Grammer.
Here.
And the Alvin Henry Tello.
Here.
Valerie Redfeller.
Here.
President.
Yes.
Cassini Klein.
Here.
Dorian here online. Brooks not with us yet, but she'll be if you guys can keep an eye out for her later when she comes in.
I appreciate that. That I am back here. Having said that, you can write the pledge if you're able. Pleasure.
Yes. You're alive. You have to stay. Why? Like, uh.
You're up. All right, it is holidays, isn't it? Glad to see everybody in fact. Just thinking like it is where everybody. In the words of Tom, it's always great. Having said that, we have a subtle recognition that you see on the on the agenda. And there's a pick a lung. One that I quite brought up is to have somebody in our in our face. But I'll turn it to the mayor in regards to the recognition. Is that right now? You're up.
You know, there are a lot of people in Churchill Borough that do a lot of outstanding and amazing things. And I've played to know Ken for quite a number of years, especially when I think of Ken, I go back to the days we we sat in his living room, or dining room rather, with the tree committee and Barry was there, Ken and a couple of other people. It reminded me like, this is like small town get together, roots grassroots things to get together. Forge and hammer out our tree ordinance for the borough. But today I get the pleasure to, come on, Ken, I get the pleasure to announce another accomplishment that Ken has made. And a lot of people over the years would say, who's that guy that's always running around the borough? Let's get Balki. And, you know, and over the years, I've learned a lot about Ken and how that all started, you know, with him trying to impress Ruthann doing certain things that, you know, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. And he's been awarded some things from through the University of Pittsburgh. So tonight, the Churchill Borough Office of Council and Mayor presented to this certificate is presented to Ken Balki for being awarded the 2024 Award of Distinction in Track and Field and Cross Country by the University of Pittsburgh. Since 1961, the Pitt varsity letter club has honored distinguished letter winners in their professional work community. These awarded individuals are recognized for their ability to enhance enhance the value of their intercollegiate athletics program at the University of Pittsburgh. As the Chair of the Churchill Borough Tree Committee since its inception in 2018, Mr. Balki is dedicated to carrying out the borough's vision to make for a safe, attractive, active, and healthy community appealing to families, individuals, and businesses who choose to make their investments on their wealth and time in the borough. Churchill Borough Council and Mayor recognize and congratulate Ken Balki for being awarded the 2024 Award of Distinction in Track and Field Cross Country by the University of Pittsburgh. We thank him for his continued dedication to the Churchill Borough and the Borough Tree Committee. We thank him for the continued hard work and dedication to preserving and enhancing the Borough Tree Committee. Ken, thank you.
Yeah, I just say, anyway, whatever it was. Thank you very much. Since I got the call from Sam Canacy a couple of weeks ago, I didn't sleep at night. This is a tremendous honor and as I let a few folks know that the work I've done with the tree committee, this is the committee who selects individuals for this recognition and that they definitely would have viewed a work with our tree committee in a very positive manner. And it's just been a pleasure to work with everyone over the last five and a half years on council. The school district is a huge one, you know, the land trust and outside partners like the tree Pittsburgh and other trade tree commissions of other municipalities. And for me, it's been a pleasure just to work with the committee itself and every Barry, this loves her, he's one of the founding members of the group. But one person I really want to acknowledge is Ruthanne. I would not be here. I, in 25 days, I met Ruthann 55 years ago. She's coming up in May, but I met her ice skating at the old Civic Arena. We, she lived in the side hills, I was from the north, it was just by chance on one day, our paths crossed and we met. But in days after meeting her, my times in the mild dropped dramatically. I ended up finding myself anchoring this disentomically relayed Madison Square Garden in front of 20,000 people. I came back and the coach said, you're running so well, you're repeating so many people, he says, you have a scarlet the rest of the way. So unless in a hundred days of meeting her, I found myself a bracelet proof and my life has changed forever. So, but I'm really enjoying. Thank you so much.
If anybody else knows, if anyone in our community that has done something that needs some recognition, it's one of the pleasures that I have at least to bring in front of council and let everyone, you know, hear the accomplishments that you contribute to our community and to yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, and if I can say, held a pit. There's a great, there's a great thing to be said about both what you contribute to the community, but as a pit alum and as one you make me proud and you make me proud doing athletic accomplishments because we build on those things. Right? The bold direction. So it shouldn't be forgotten, it should always be celebrated. So thank you, you're a gang. We will move forward then to public comment. So at this time, if somebody has a comment that would like to make, if you can stand, state your name. You'll have three minutes, of course, name and address. I know you could, I promise you. Stack bear as well as brothers. And so we will, we will begin now up there by left.
Oh, I'm Gary Kistloff, 176 Thornberry Tribe. Last appeared before this august body, I believe it was August. And I raised the question of deer infestation. And again, from my perspective and many in the community, we feel council believes that inactivity equals inactivity. I'm, what I'm going to say will surprise no one in this room. We're overinfested, as is the rest of the state of Pennsylvania with deer. We moved into the number one position in the United States, both in terms of the incidence of Lyme disease and auto deer interaction. It used to be the state of Connecticut, but due to our incessant efforts, we've moved into number one. I'm actually, we should be terrible. The incidents of Lyme disease continues to grow. Not only Lyme disease, but a host of other what are known as Wackesio diseases are threatening the community. Everyone in this room knows about this. So the question is, what are we going to do about it? Now, from my perspective, and I, I want to be criticized, and I hope I'm laying myself open to some very intelligent criticism. We can cull the herd, which apparently was done several decades ago. Not very appealing to some people, appealing to others. We can engage in chemical sterilization, very expensive. My response to that is we have some coordination with Monroeville and Penn Hills, maybe there's a
Minute of cheer. Thank you for your patience. Yeah.
So we are, right, we're having a technical difficulty. So the online. Yeah, I'm kind of letting folks just generally know that the online version right now from the owl is not working. And so unfortunately, until we're able to get that resolved, this will be the only kind of audio that's available or and we'll have everybody kind of un, you know, turn their cameras on so that you're able to at least see those of us at the table. So that at least we can provide that until we're able to resolve the technical difficulty. I also realize that with my camera on the wreath behind me seems to be the exact same texture as my hair. It makes it look like my Afro like somehow is, and so it's quite interesting. I will say that now if you look. Having said that, it is very festive. It's festive in a very Simpsons kind of way, if you will. Having, look at the camera, you wish I was joking. So having said that, though, we're going to go to the side on on public comment. So if you have comment, if you'd like to stand, if you're able, state your name. You're.
My comment isn't as powerful as both of you were. I just wanted to thank the council for the Christmas parade the other day, Santa. That was awesome. And so many kids on my street came out to see Santa, but was worn the other year. So I think maybe more younger families were going in to like, like, did you guys do that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. I think a lot of it has to do with our staff and pushing out on social media and yes, savvy citizen that more people are aware of it happening and people complained around it.
It was fun. It was a lot of fun.
It really was. Awesome. And we had a wonderful Santa. It was wonderful that Santa was able to stop by. Part of his elves. And we had more, we had more kids than we had from the Easter bunny.
And I actually, wow, it's like, wow.
Yeah, no, we actually, we had over 110, 120 children.
Wonderful.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, so that was great.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for the comment and thank you for the
This will be brought out later as well. Direct department, the volunteer fire department, the people who showed up to drive that truck that did on Saturday and all the other people that were involved behind the scenes.
Right.
To bring that to our residents, which like you said, I mean, it was well received by all the kids in the borough. I know from seeing some pictures, kids jumping up and down to see Santa.
I was taking the pictures and they were just jumping up and down, running to Santa. It was just pure joy.
And they are supposed to our faithful fans.
Wonderful.
Yeah, but again, like you said, we had seven or eight of our firefighter volunteers there, you know, giving up their, they give up enough as it is and giving up their Saturday to help everybody out. It was just really wonderful, even a little bit of rain at the time. So, thank you all.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you for your comment. Moving forward, is there anybody else in the room with with comment? Hearing none. Somebody needs to down their volume. I think we got the owl back up. No? Okay. So we
Again, I'm gonna give that the chance to speak, but if I can get the TVs to be the speakers, normally the owl's the speaker. We'll give it a try.
What I'd like to do is see if we can allow people online to provide public comments so that we can continue to move forward. And if you can just help me understand kind of whether that's something we can do or not right now.
What I wanted to see, she'll come through where?
Gotcha.
I don't quite know where she's going.
Let's Let's find out where Kathy comes through.
Okay. Can you hear me?
The computer, apparently.
Yes.
Yes, we can hear.
First off, I want to apologize to Santa that my grandchildren were not here when he came by. My grandchildren were two timing you, Santa. They were sitting on another Santa's lap and hugging another Santa. It was just quite a scandal. So I apologize for that. I want to point out that as far as the video tonight, Jay, at the beginning of the meeting, my husband and I were having trouble understanding you, but now that the owl's not working, it's much easier to understand you. And I don't know the other, nobody else spoke before the problem developed. So I don't know if that was, would have been a universal thing. So what's ever going on, it, your microphone is working better apparently from where you're sitting. And I also just want to request that if you could repeat what the gentleman was saying about the deer, because many of us are very interested in that. I, I would love to have, I, I'd like to hear what, what he said after the audio went down, or if somebody could summarize that. I'm very interested in seeing the problem addressed. And now that Pittsburgh, and I may be repeating what he said because I don't know what he said. Pittsburgh did their program. I've read comments about it and what they had to do, I think they had to work with the game commission or some state agency to, in order to be able to do what they did. And that now the information is being analyzed so that they can move to the next step and it may involve, you know, firearms. I don't know for sure, but I know that a lot of people love the deer and they don't want them touched or hurt or harmed. But what we are doing now, we are a society of animal hoarders where we, whether we want to be or not. And we are being cruel to these animals by allowing this overpopulation problem. In addition to all the things he was mentioning, the diseases and everything. And it's also hurting other animals whose environment is being destroyed by the overgrazing of the deer. So that's all that I have to say. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And we want to congratulate Ken. What a wonderful award. He's very, very deserving. And I don't want to let the cat out of the bag, but you'll be addressing this later. I want to say, Alex, you've just been an outstanding, outstanding borough manager. And we're very sorry to lose you. Hope that you'll be back to visit sometimes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. And, and just to summarize, I think, because it was done, I'd like to kind of give, give that moment to say that it really, the comment was, you know, looking at kind of what's the status of what's happening with the deer. I then responded that we'll talk about that in a bit at the end. However, he had pointed out that really there, there are you know, three measures that, that one can look at calling, right? Sterilization, you know, we're essentially doing nothing, but in the doing nothing, if there can be information that would be provided to the public, you know, around things, you know, like, for instance, understanding, you know, what plants, gears don't eat, knowing how much we, we enjoy the garden club and other work like that. Other ways to, to help prevent, you know, the difficulty of having the deer. And so he had asked kind of what the status is, what the response is to kind of those three. If we're not going to do something, if we're unable to do something, they kind of come forward and say we're unable to do so. And then to look at that plan of kind of information. And if we are going to do something with regard to either calling or sterilization, he outlined, which, which we've known, which is that sterilization can be extremely expensive. We have people who go on both sides of calling. And so I think that that summarizes, if I'm missing anything, I'm looking to make sure that I didn't, I got a, I got an okay sign that, that I had properly summarized. So that, that was the, the context of, of the conversation. So, so that, you know.
Could I have my remaining five seconds and just say that if we don't do something, then what Pittsburgh has done and is doing is less effective and other boroughs are jumping on the wagon and doing things. And we lose some momentum by not joining them in their efforts.
Duly noted and coordinated effort is probably the best effort that one could make.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you for, for your comment, Kathy. I don't know if there's anybody else that we have, Alex. I believe that is the, the remainder of public comment. If I've gotten it wrong, Alex will correct me. Anyway, still trying to figure out our owl apparently has lost a wing. It does not, does not fly the way it used to. That being the case, we'll move forward with the ordinary items, beginning with number three, which is the minutes.
I apologize. I don't like bringing my, my laptop with me, so I'm speaking through Deb Cassini Klein's computer because I think you can hear me. Right? Mr. President, I move to accept the meeting minutes from the Monday, November 6, 2023 Borough Council Workshop Meeting. And from the Monday, November 13, 2023, regular council meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, Brooke. And the minutes are accepted without opposition. Moving on to the mayor's reports. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to give some reviews.
People on Agnew has reported to me that there were no significant incidents during the month of November 2023. Our officers handled a total of 838 events, 10,865 today, consisting of both called for service and proactive control engagements and veto, resulting in seven arrests. The department's five police vehicles logged a total of 4,175 miles. The combined year-to-date tow was 50,112 miles. The 2017 Ford Interceptor SUV was driven with most miles last night of one, last month rather, of 1,969 miles. That's just a favorite car. People on Agnew had reported a total amount of magisterial clients collected for the month of November 2023 with $397.08, making the total for year-to-date as $8,429.2966. The ticket summary for the month of November 2023 was 31, zero non-traffic, 16 parking tickets and parking and 15 traffic tickets. Chief Agnew has reported to me that our vehicle fleet has finally been secured back to five control vehicles, now in service. Car 10, 2024 Interceptor SUV, which was damaged in a vehicle crash earlier in the year, has been repaired and returned. And car seven, a 2022 Dodge Durango, is finally delivered after more than a year long wait for availability and completely straightened and outfitted. Churchill Police Department will again be participating in two different local toy drive events, both occurring on Saturday, December 17. The first is the annual stuff a store sponsored by the Western Pennsylvania Police Athletic, Athletic League, which is held at Monrova Mall from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The second is the Blue Santa Toy Giveaway, which immediately follows from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM and is being held at the Brad Hill Shopping Center this year. Both events are aimed at providing voice for the less fortunate children in our communities and have both truly made a profound impact in the lives of families over the years. Stuff Store was established nearly 30 years ago when Blue Santa, celebrating its fifth anniversary with the police department, with Churchill Police, being proud, a proud participant in both programs. Chief would also like to thank the residents who dropped off an unwrapped gift to the designated box in the borough, in the borough building lobby and the monetary donations from the Churchill Wolfens Rotary and other individuals. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of November 2023 are reported from the attached police department report.
Thank you.
Mayor Grammer, could you repeat the date of that again?
It's like, it's December 17th at Monrova Mall.
Did you say Saturday?
Sunday.
From Sunday? Okay, I thought you said Saturday.
From 9:00 AM to 11:00. And the second event will be beginning at 11:00 AM to 1:00 at the Brad Hill Shopping Center. And anyone that might
I'm frightened by this. I'm frightened by this. Better? Yeah, tell them to turn my guy. Kill me, kill my guy. Your own buddy.
Mr. President, I have a motion to accept the mayor's report for November twenty twenty-three.
Second. You, any discussion?
Uh, Paul, a question, so did you say that they're still accepting toys for that? Okay, and the drop-off is in the borough lobby, till, what was that date one more time?
Uh, the Sunday, well, Sunday, December seventeenth is when the event will take place, so up until then, I would probably make Saturday the drop-off date. Sixteen.
Okay.
Saturday, December sixteenth.
And it's an unwrapped gift, and we did ask about ages and, you know, whatever you think is appropriate for a, a young job. If it's sports, basketball, football, some little, you know, whatever you feel is appropriate.
I think originally Ron said nine to fourteen, but then he said, if you got something younger, that's fine too. And I think they were kind of honing in at nine or fourteen.
Yeah, if the chief is that, I think the chief does. Five, two, later.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, Brooke, this is a delay, my apologies again, I keep, I keep looking and. Laying you that. Uh. Hearing opposition carries without, uh, money carries, moving forward to the treasurer and, uh, finance.
Mr. President, I motion to accept the treasurer's report for November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And direct the finance officer to pay the bills for the Borough of Churchill accrued since November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion?
I will read the larger bill. As we usually do, um, Alka-San, forty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-three. Fifty-three sun gateway engineering for the November invoice is twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Bigliotti Landscape and Construction Inc., seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Soul Lee Construction Inc., thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. State Pipe Services Inc. for the CCTV sanitary is ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. McKinley Landscape Nursery Inc. is six thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And P Two Contracting is five thousand eight hundred and six dollars and ninety cents.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Getting better. Any, any opposed? And the motion carries without opposition, the bill to be paid, the report is accepted, moving on to number seven.
Mr. President, uh, I motion to adopt ordinance seven seven two. Uh, setting the twenty twenty-four sanitary sewage fees and charges to be assessed for sewage collection. Transportation and treatment for the Borough of Churchill and the Allegheny Counter Sewage Authority, Alka-San. Uh, and for reference, those are the same fees for the Churchill, uh, Borough. Which is eight dollars and fifty cents per one thousand gallon, and then there was an increase by Alka-San. So based on, uh, typical use, that will go from nine dollars and fifty-nine cents to ten dollars and twenty-eight cents, uh, in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, your second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Not explanatory.
Can you just speak to Matt, what the sewage fees are, um, that we collect for the borough? What they're utilized for, for residents who are still unaware, um, what that sewage fee is related to?
Sure, I'd, I'd be happy to, thanks, Brooke, um, the eight dollar and fifty cents surcharge for one thousand gallons that the borough charges is for. Uh, upkeep maintenance and replacement of the sewer lines, so in the borough. Uh, we own all of the sewers underneath the roadway, all the collection pipes. Uh, until the point where it exits the borough system and goes, uh, into other municipalities where we flow through and eventually makes its way down to Alka-San. So that's for, uh, all our CCTV work for checking those lines, you know, ten percent of it needs to be checked each year. Uh, and then for maintaining and replacing them.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries without opposition, moving on to number eight.
Mr. President, I motion to adopt the twenty twenty-four Borough of Churchill General Fund Budget. With revenues of three billion two hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and income of three million two hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-five. Dollars and sixty-four cents, the difference being of twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents more revenue than income.
Thank you, sir, second, second, thank you, any discussion?
I'll have a question, uh.
Go ahead, Brooke.
So, um, this is a question related to our Vigliotti expenses. I know that I had reached out to Alex last week, um, asking about some of the expenditure expenditures. That were outlined on our budget, not equalling the proposed bid expenditures for twenty twenty-four. Were you able to find out why there was a hundred thousand dollar difference? And will that impact our, what we're passing tonight?
Sure, my latter question, no. What question I provided in the binder, an explanation from the fact that was sent out on Friday. Which is when we put together the bid specs for the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight Public Services Contract. We, um, looked at basically five or so years' worth of bills. And hours and tasks performed by Vigliotti. And as I said in the email, I smoothed the numbers out and then ramped them up, rounded them higher. Um, and then wanted to do that so that we could say to any potential bidder, uh, the magnitude, what could be. Similar to when we order quantities or bid bids on quantities for pipe or for construction, for salt. Um, we, we don't necessarily know how much salt we'll need in a given year, but we, we put out a number, it might be plus or minus. In, in this case, it's definitely minus, there, there's never been a year where we had as many hours as we put into the contract. And then, Brooke, I took another step, um, with, which was looking at the hourly rates. I don't know how Dave Jones stays in business, uh, when he bid in twenty seventeen. The difference between his twenty seventeen rate and the twenty twenty-three rate, which we currently pay this month, for example, went up three point six percent. Now, I don't know about you, but think about two thousand seventeen, think about twenty twenty-four, but think about twenty twenty-eight. It's not reasonable that that rate of change would happen. So certainly Joe's rates are higher than the twenty seventeen rates, and they vary because they're different tasks, um. You know, some of them are like fourteen or fifty percent higher and so forth, but when we looked at the rates. And then multiplied them by past bills and hour dues, um, both, Magell and I did that exercise. We felt good about the budget, and here's why I answered the former first, and that was the budget question. Was that we just in general, not knowing what the numbers would be, and that we wouldn't have those numbers to December. In the finance committee, pushed the numbers up. And we just expected, though can't, pardon this, when he charged us in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-eight, for example, or twenty twenty-four. That he would have to pass on us costs that he has a business owner's experience, so. We, we looked at it several different ways and we feel really confident, um, other than the variable which we can't control, for example, snow or. Uh, asking a lot of Vigliotti's crew that will be within budget on all those items that Vigliotti currently, um, you know, billed the borough for. Does, does that help or am I missing something?
That helps, I just want to ensure that, that the twenty twenty-four budget that we're proposing has about three hundred thousand dollars. And expenditures for Vigliotti's public services for the borough. However, the new bid that we put out for twenty twenty-four through, um. I think it's what, five years, twenty twenty-nine, has the twenty twenty-four expenditures around four hundred and eleven thousand. So I just wanted to ensure that the budget that we're passing. Um, with our revenues and expenditures are more, are closer to what we will actually anticipate for twenty twenty-four. Opposed to the four hundred thousand dollar, um, bid expenditures that we received. In response, or proposed in response to our bid request, I just want to ensure that. We are passing a budget that's realistic, um, so that way we're not getting in twenty twenty-four and what we. Pass in the budget is not really what we're actually spending, we're spending more. Um, opposed to staying at the three hundred thousand dollar mark. Do you understand what I'm saying to you, Alex? I'm like driving and talking at the same time.
No, you, you, you prayed it perfectly and your email was outstandingly written and I was attempting last week to answer, but I guess I must have missed the mark. But yes, I feel very confident that the number that we've budgeted will cover Vigliotti expenses. Despite the fact that the budget number was created before the bids were received. And despite that the bid number for total for twenty-four is higher. Because that's a function that the bid was created in, wanting to be exaggerated. Uh, in order that we've made sure that whatever bidders who would entertain bidding would not. Um, shortchange us and would be more than capable of performing the task, so for example, there's a lot of equipment in that bid. Some of the equipment Joe has listed for years, but maybe hasn't even used. But we wanted to get good rates and we wanted to say, we really want you to use that and we think you might use it forty hours here and another fifty hours there. And those hours are exaggerating, there was never a year, for example, that we had of those total hours, but they were based on, uh. The, the, the breakdown of past years, you know, the way things would break down, so there'd be a lot of snow involved there, a lot of road, um, work. So yeah, I feel really good about the, the number that we've budgeted for twenty twenty-four. And, um, you know, the beautiful thing is the way Ralph manages it, and, and Joe as a trusted partner. It's, it's, it's very, very smart. Um, Ralph is a budget guy and he, he knows that we have work to do, we get it done. Like that is a function of budget, and there may be some things where you're saying to Joe, you know, we don't need the third guy or fourth guy for this thing, let's just keep it, let's keep it in the middle. And he manages that extremely well, every invoice for the last, I don't know how many years. That whether it was Joe or Martin before them, the other vendors, Ralph monitors so that we don't lose track of that, so even if it were, for example. Third quarter and we're a little bit tight, um, Ralph will, will manage it well, so that's another reason I'm confident, I forgot to mention it. In my email reply back to you earlier.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that we're anticipating, uh, the expenses to be lower than what the. Proposed bid expenditures were, so you answered the question, we can continue.
Thank you for that, Brooke, is, is any other discussion on the matter?
So I had two things on the budget, uh, one, I just wanted to point out, just for clarity, that this is a, a zero-mil increase budget. Which we had already discussed, but I don't think we said that when we were, you know, presenting it, um. Oh, sorry. Well, that's right, that's all I didn't know, my, my fault, uh, the other thing though, I had, um. Just a comment on is, I know the budget takes into account, you know, uh, hiring a person for code enforcement and I think fire support. Um, I understand the desire and, and need for that, I say I would fully support. Um, you know, kind of a shared fire position between Wilkins that was talked about some time ago when this first kind of came up. Um, however, I think having somebody to try to dual, dual duty really isn't going to serve the borough, uh, the way we want it to. Um, and I have concern that, you know, this is kind of a step towards paid fire, which will probably cost somewhere. You know, a million dollars a year or more if we end up having to move to full paid fire one day. And that there's some other alternatives we really need to take a hard look at now, I know that.
This budget is option one, which has no extra revenue or extra expenditures for a police officer nor. For the code person slash fire person, we were calling that the property safety specialist. However, um, there's a lot of difference between last Monday's workshop meeting and today. And that difference will be come January second, if you have some, my reservation and so forth, my budget, my salary will be out of the mix. And your council, the council, who's in January, is going to have to decide whether to hire and fill the position, so it has been advertised, the property safety specialist. And what you would be doing instead of maybe directly hunting for my replacement, maybe take staff you have. And adjust and then take those applicants and if there's a person that you feel is best for chemistry, because it's two, not one. When it comes to hiring, and if you feel you're that culture chemistry person, go ahead and hire them in January. Um, and, and budget-wise, you, you will have no net negative, so this is option one budget, you can go back to six or seven tracks. And the final proposals that we did and advertised, this expenditure was what was advertised, and no adjustment between Monday and today. The big difference though will be in January, you won't have my salary on the budget, but you have an opportunity to make choices at that time.
Right, assuming, assuming that there is a vote to reopen the budget?
N- no, no, you can hire a staff person if you have the revenue.
And so then the doctor required the exit, yeah, but we can just move forward as, as the, that is the will of the council.
We, this is Pat here, he found a rare opportunity in Athley Brown, we had such and such, boy, we didn't want. To lose what we think, we, we thought we could provide for the residents, so it was not a budgeted personnel addition. But it ended up becoming though by active council.
Oh, I, I mean, I, I understand the budget and, and I, I understand that, what I'm saying is that, you know, I, yeah, I, I said my piece, thank you.
Any, any other discussion, just for clarity, then the current budget, we have the ability to, to hire for that, but not for the current budget, that will include that. That position, that, that being the ability there, so we can go in, in the direction of previous discussion. Any other, uh, discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any objection? Uh, hearing none, the ayes have it, motion carries, uh, accepted, moving on to number nine.
Mr. President, I motion to adopt resolution four five eight zero of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Maintaining the real estate tax rate at eight mils for the twenty twenty-four General Fund Budget.
Second. Thank you, is there any discussion? Is your, well, we have no, no others to discuss on it, you can. Hearing none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries without opposition, uh, moving on to number ten.
Mr. President, uh, I motion to adopt resolution four five eight one, uh, Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny. Approving the twenty twenty-four fee schedule for permits and services.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, any discussion? The schedule is available, I'll have to look at that and I'll feed, uh, any other discussion on the matter?
We talked about this last time, there was from the, um.
Local government, local government.
Had a financial health assessment, um, there was some, which was great for the borough, we learned a lot of information, there was a lot of helpful information on there. Uh, that are some fee schedules needed to change.
Yeah, and going forward, Gavin's aware of it, you're going to have to, uh, pass an ordinance, kind of an omnibus ordinance that would cover several. Sections of the code whereby you have enumerated the rates by ordinance, and that's not really the, that's what I'm doing, it just creates cost of hearings and. sections of the code whereby you have enumerated the rates by ordinance. And that's not really the, that's what I'm doing. It just creates costs of hearings and, and advertisement. So you'll do that next year. But I would like annually for you always to consider doing a fee resolution just to, if nothing else, um, force everyone to think are these right size for the cost that the borough have to incur to do whatever it is, you know, the fees cover. So from time to time, it's good to look at, but if you do it annually, it'll just be a best practice for you.
Thank you, Alex.
You, any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes to the opposition. Moving on to number eleven.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution four, five, eighty two of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving the twenty twenty four salaries for elected officials, appointed salary and non-salary employees and union employees.
Second. You, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And motion carries without opposition. Moving on to number twelve.
Mr. President, uh, I motion to award bid for public work services to Vigliotti Landscape and Construction, our current vendor, uh, at a total five-year, twenty twenty four through twenty twenty eight bid of two million, one hundred twenty-one thousand dollars or twenty-one thousand, five hundred, six dollars and forty-three cents.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, presented to you. Thank you for continuing with the work. We're happy.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Happy you're back on board. I remember when you came on, uh, you know, there's always the thing, you know, I mean, it's probably feel nervous. It's, it's a new provider. What does it look like? Obviously, a year and a half. Um, but you know, you've done fantastic work and what we're fortunate to have you as a contact, of course. Appreciate it. Anyone? Uh, any other discussion on the matter?
I was just going to mention that, um, you know, I think this was a, a great move by the borough a number of years ago. And I've seen, you know, how advantageous it's been for us to, to have someone like, um, you know, Joe's company available that, um, you know, we have a lot of equipment and manpower at our disposal when we need it. But, uh, in the meantime, you know, it's not sitting around just collecting dust. We don't have to build another garage to have, you know, four more backhoes that are just sitting there, especially for a small borough. Um, you know, I think this makes a lot of sense and, and we're, you know, glad to have that ability and, and appreciate all the service.
Standing. Any other discussion on the matter? You, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And motion carries. Move on to number thirteen.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution four, five, eight, three of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appointing three individuals for three-year terms to the Churchill Borough Recreation Board. It'll be Kelly Stover, Janet Paul and Joseph, I'm going to mess up, Katalinki, Junior.
Second. You, any discussion?
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. We really appreciate it.
That is the real, the real story of all of the, um, appointments, right? Uh, I'll make it in one statement. There's forever, all of that's the appointment. Uh, is anyone who's, is that in any meeting that I care? Uh, you know, I always started the idea of just suckerboard every day, uh, and so, but we really do appreciate the fact that we have a community where people actually volunteer their time and are willing to work for that at Churchill. And so this is one more example of that. Uh, any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And motion is accepted without opposition. We have number fourteen.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution four, five, eight, four, appointing two individuals for three-year terms to the municipal human relations committee. And that would be Cindy Hay and Mary Kay Fury.
You, is there a second?
Second.
World's a chain today.
I didn't got it. I'm excited. Right.
Famous, feel proud of yourself. So, uh, any discussion on the matter? I'll just point out my prior, prior comment. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And motion carries without opposition. Moving on to number fifteen.
Mr. President, motion to adopt resolution four, five, eight, five of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving the application for a Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, which is the D C E D Strategic Management Planning Program, which is S P M P at ninety thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, which is forty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty local share match grant to fund entering the finance cooperative with Mount Levin, Zermatt and Edna Borough.
Second. You, any discussion on the matter?
I'm excited. I, you know, I've spoken to other boroughs and it's a fantastic opportunity. Yep. A great opportunity for us.
Then, we have discussion. Hearing none. The hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries without opposition. Moving on to number sixteen.
Mr. President, I move to adopt resolution four, five, eight, six of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, accepting the resignation of Borough Manager Alexander J. Graziani effective January twenty twenty four.
Second. Discussion. Where?
Where to start? Like where to even start with that?
I, I, I suppose I'll, I'll begin discussing those. We don't really do not. Um, I would consider that Alex screwed himself to be a hospital judge of our community, from, uh, community members, council people, you know, from staff, uh, from other neighborhood communities, by frankly, uh, we were fortunate to have you as long as we did. I understand and I wish you, um, the absolute best. I know, you know, why and where is a great opportunity and the fact that you are, you know, still willing to even entertain your time with Churchill, making me feel precious. Uh, but honestly, I, I, I'm telling you that we have best managers and they, and, and anyone in our community who's got a chair to reach out, right, who's got a need, who's got a question, any council member who's been confused or didn't know how to do something, right, he has been there time and time and time again. He's been there for personally, he's been there for all of council, I know. He's been there for our solicitor, he's been there for our staff. You know, we are, we need to be fortunate to have this time to have you here. You will be sorely, sorely missed. Uh, you know, I, I know you are, you are headed off to a, to a much bigger community. Uh, and, and I, I wish you the absolute most of the best because you're that kind of human being that deserves it. And my last thing that I will say, and I'll turn it to everyone, saying, uh, forget about the question of the borough or him as a borough manager. Alex is a really good person.
Yeah.
Like a genuinely caring, concerned human being. And the world is not full of them. So in this fine, when I think it's getting harder and harder to find good people in the world, that's my own observation. Um, I feel lucky to have conversations with it and I hope to have a chance to have more. I will turn it to anybody else and.
I'll say ditto to all of that. Um, and also the leaps and bounds that this borough has drawn through since Alex came on, all of the positive changes that have been made. Um, he has been so instrumental in so many pieces that has kept this borough going. Um, and he makes us proud to, you know, the place that we live in and thank you for everything that you have done to continue to do. Um, so thank you. We will miss you.
All in favor. Second. We, we all, we all need a drink so we can.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of choked up, so I don't know how much I can say. Now, I'm trying to get any. Um, but you, I've been here two years. You just helped me out so much in the beginning. Um, and I think people may forget, you know, he was fired in the middle of COVID, um, which is tough enough. And then there was Amazon. And then there were fourteen Zooms from six to eleven at night, but probably not what you signed up for. Um, but, um, and I just kind of want to say what Daya said, beyond all the good you've done for our borough, it's, it's just so wonderful to work with such a special, special person like you. And, um, I could go on and on and on, but we think, you know, we all just thank you for all you did for us and, and what you do for the residents. Somebody has a complaint or a call and sometimes I would even tell him, you've got to stop because, you know, not that I don't want you to answer what you need to do, but, um, he just devotes so much time beyond the hours here, weekends. I mean, sometimes I'll yell at him for sending me an email at night and I'll just say, go to bed, we'll talk tomorrow, but things like that. But, um, I just can't thank you enough for all you've done for me, for the council and for our, our borough. And I know our residents appreciate that too. Um, I'm going to follow up on what something that Dow said and that did said, and this has to do with professional conduct. We interviewed Alex via Zoom. We were in the middle of COVID. Uh, both of our longtime staff members, with Ralph being an exception, uh, had retired. Alex had never been in this building before he was hired. Um, he came to see us on, uh, in July of twenty twenty. He had a total with what, one day with our former manager, uh, at his expense, by the way. Uh, then he went on to hire, uh, exceptional staff to learn our borough with extraordinary speed. And to deal with, no one will ever know, the complexity of what we were suddenly faced with, the proposed Amazon project, uh, which he had grasped in terms of engineering and everything else. Beyond that, uh, the support that he provided for our, for our council, for our community, uh, and the professionalism that he brought to this job, it's a standard that, uh, it's, and I, I interacted with lots of other organizations and I, and I talked to other people about their managers and believe me, we have an extraordinary treasure. His dedication to his profession and his professionalism is outstanding. And we have met usually every Monday morning. And I've, uh, you know, put challenges in front of him and, and I had some, some pointed conversations between us. Uh, and, uh, I love him, respect him as much as I possibly could and wish you the best.
The drilling's been mine. That's why we can keep going. Um, hopefully to be better than I deserve. And when I, when I was, you all know it well, I had lost my situation in a previous quarter. And didn't know whether I even have to leave the state or where I can find the opportunity to work again. Uh, but you guys took a chance on me and it allowed me to come and serve here. And every resident and every interaction, Ralph's, I mean, I made the landing strip straight and long and easy for me to do, everything I could do. Um, he even, you know, so company, so child and, and every council member, every time that you all put in to help me feel welcome in finding a place here. Can't say enough. Um, few times in a month's career, you find an opportunity where by virtue of the employment is waiting, you become a better human being and learned a lot about yourself and about people. And this has been one of those. I'm so thankful, Ralph.
This is what is.
Very hard. Um, but, you know, we only get one time around and sometimes you make decisions that you think about larger pictures. But I'm driving in today, setting up for tonight, sitting with Michelle, thinking about this being the last time I really got. Um, but Michelle's such a classy, honorable, straightforward, faithful person. Yeah, I'm so happy to have gotten to work with her. Gavin is amazing. Dennis, you're such good team here. So don't, please don't think it had anything to do with other than it's a team. Like really, I'm, I'm the one who's blessed. I'm the one who's got opportunity. And I think I've been able to make the most. I know personally I've benefited a ton. But you have such a great team here and the collaborative nature of the council, the way you work in committees is, is just tremendous. And I've got to say it firsthand. I know for, for Ashley and Michelle and Ralph, we, we're really motivated by y'all because you just work really well together and you put time in. And I know you're getting a little pay next year, a few of you guys quit your day job. I feel like you have your Christmas presents next year, but you put way more time in than from, from, from the bear and all his things. The guy's here every day. I will miss Kevin Collins' donuts. I've got, no, I'm worried you imagine this. Uh, it's been a real blow over and you can't miss it. I miss it. This was, this.
We had lots of discussions about the sweep.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to work here. Um, you guys took a chance on me. I really appreciate that. I agree with you. Thank you. Well, we kind of did, and the privilege has been mine.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's it all.
And we're all very, very happy about his position. We're so proud of him. Everybody wishes he the best.
Well, and to echo Diane, when I first heard, you know, I thought it, well, kind of like when you're playing in Wilkes-Barre, Stranding for the Penguins and, you know, Pittsburgh called up and said, hey, we need you on the main ice. Like, you don't say no. So congratulations.
And there's actually an open motion on the floor.
We tried to delay it. Well, I, I seconded it already.
But we haven't.
Yeah, so.
We haven't all been.
At this point, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it does carry without opposition. Now that we've said goodbye, we can say hello if we move on to number seventeen.
Mr. President, I move to adopt resolution four, five, eight, seven of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving an agreement to contract with Alex, Alexander J. Graziani to provide limited technical assistance during the borough manager transition from January one, twenty twenty four June thirty, twenty twenty four at a rate of fifty dollars an hour, not to exceed ten hours a week.
Second. You, is there any discussion? Just point out, uh, first of all, every time I think, uh, the, the fact of the matter is that this is another one of the reasons that Alex has been such a great person. Great. He could, he could walk away, you know, he, he's willing to make sure that our borough transitions in a way that, that does for us, right? And so we appreciate it more than anything else. Um, once again, kind of showing his character, uh, that, that we, that he has through this entire process. So I, I can't say enough about whatever hours we can get, you know, but also just your, your commitment to us that we, we really do appreciate it. Uh, any other discussion on the matter?
I have a question. Will the management and government committee be responsible for, um, locating a new borough manager? Establishing, you know, the hiring process for that, if we go that route, hiring outside of the staff that we already have?
Ge- generally, you know, the process, M and G goes through the process, goes through the initial, um, selection, but then it come in, obviously it's up to all of council. So, you know, there is a point in which all of council would have some way in, uh, you're expected, no matter what process was put in place. Uh, because we have, that's, that's a higher than we're all, that, that being the case, uh, I think that we, we can have a conversation of what that, what that will look like certainly. Uh, I think that's going to, obviously we will have, you're expected, right? So, uh, but a great question, great question. All right. Any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Pose. And motion carries without opposition, uh, moves us on to the last of the, uh, tonight, um.
Mister President, I motion to adopt resolution four five eight eight. Of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Establishing a minimal municipal obligation for pension funds pursuant to Pennsylvania Act two oh five of nineteen eighty four. As amended for the year twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion on the matter? Yeah. We look forward to with our obligation on the pension that we have to give. Uh, and that. Uh. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. And the motion carries without opposition, uh, let's move us on to kind of covering your staff. I think I'll start with our engineer and move our way through.
Uh, thank you, Mister President. Our, uh, report was submitted within the binder. Um, just a couple of quick things to note. For the sanitary sewer operation maintenance contract. Um, the CCTV contract was at the end of year three, so next year we would need to rebid that contract. Both the activation and, uh, sewer lining contract. For year one of year three, those will be recommended for the next year to present.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for the engineer? Hearing none, moving on to the manager. You, Michelle.
Um, thank you, President, I would like to call notes to the budget narrative that Ashley has bravely pioneered. Um, we really took a lot of time and dedication along with the. Um, budget and finance committee to make sure we get this budget in a really good spot. We look like one of the, uh, top awardees of budget narrative across the state and the nation. Um, wasn't exactly where I wanted, but I strive to get to a pretty good place, so. Um, yeah, just if everyone can take a moment, I think that was a pretty good budget narrative. Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
Forward, uh. Both public works and fire.
Look, the only thing I have, Mister President, tonight is, uh, our company has responded four hundred sixty eight of all of the road under the actual five hundred in the year. Uh, the public works were, we're ready for snow, but we don't want that. So we've been at, uh, basically, what we've been doing is fixing signs and doing other things that we couldn't do when the weather was a little. Little nasty, so, uh, we're getting a little side work done with the good weather we're having. And I just want to say publicly that it was a honor to work with Alex. He's a great manager and I appreciate all his hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. I will go with the, if there's anything that you would like to add?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir. To our solicitor.
Nothing to add, thanks for having me, have a happy holidays.
Always glad to have you. All right. And then, I mean, bring up the room, or on the table, if we can, and then we can walk you out of here. Uh, so we're getting, uh, the interview.
I just kind of wish everyone happy holidays, I wanted to thank again Sanders for coming down, that was awesome as always. I want to thank BCA for throwing amazing events in Ginger Red House. I think it just shows how far our community is, everything that we do, and it's because of the residents. And the people who live here, so thank you all and happy holidays and have a stable.
Uh, echo what Andrea said, happy holidays, stay safe out there, uh, enjoy the nice little weather break we're having. Until we don't. Um, thank you all for coming today.
Uh, yeah, similar, you know, happy holidays to all, uh, I hope everyone has a wonderful new year. I would, uh, also just throw out there, make sure you're checking on your neighbors that maybe aren't. Uh, you know, as young as they once were or as able-bodied, so while we have. You know, the the nasty weather that will eventually come, you know, if people need help with snow or maybe taking the trash cans in, whatever else, you know. Be be sure to be helping and, uh, get out and spend some time, drive around the borough in the evening and enjoy all the the holiday decorations, it's truly wonderful.
You, Brooke, I don't know if you have any any comments you wanted to make? Brooke?
Everyone have a happy holiday. Apologize for not being in person, um, but I thank everyone for the work that they did this past year anticipating twenty twenty four. And us working better together in the new year, um, and. See you in twenty twenty four.
Good day. Thank you.
Um, I want to thank Ralph again, um, we spoke earlier before you were here. To thank you and the firefighters, volunteer firefighters who came out on Saturday, you know, and sang some of the songs. And there were a lot of them and they're just great, great, grateful people, and just want to thank you for that. I also want to say that. On this last, I'll get to something else, um, this is the last, um, meeting and. You're a brilliant engineer and you've done so much with. I'm I'm on the infrastructure committee with him and I'm I'm in awe a lot. His knowledge and how he works so well with Denny and Gateway. And you've done so much more than I think most residents ever know that you do for our community. And, um, I know everyone feels the same way and. We just want to thank you for all your hard work that you and your devotion for our community.
Thanks.
Really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Our pleasure. And I'm done, oh, I have one more thing. Please, this winter, it might be getting cold soon, please check on your elderly neighbors. Um, if we get cold spells and, you know, they might not have, their heater might be going on for the first time and. Just to check up on them or anybody who lives near you that lives alone, um, I think that's important.
Amen.
Um, I'm just grateful, just grateful, uh, for, uh, our staff, the extraordinary staff that we have. The, uh, collegiality of our council. Uh, the mutual respect and, uh, hard work that everybody put in on everything. Uh, I'm, um. We can't talk about the thing that I want to talk about because I will not be able to keep control of myself, so, uh. I will just say thank you all and, uh. I gotta wait to have said, Matt, thank you. Uh, that's all.
Awesome. Uh, that leaves, uh, the always saying, you know, me being you and going home over with something better than this, I'd see with the mayor.
That's it, yes. Well, I will try and be brief. Now, I would, what Jay had mentioned earlier, when he talked about Alex, all the council members and all of us here who've gotten to know Alex over the years. Every time I come into the building, I go into his office, he always has time for it. His door's not locked, he'll stop what he's doing, he talks to you, he's even good at doing things while he's stuck. So he's an amazing guy, he's such a professional. You know, we're definitely gonna miss him, but again, we know you're going on the better things like Matt does, when the Penguins call you, you got to go. So that's it. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention. The volunteer fire department, being with them on Saturday and watching the way they operate. Those men know exactly what they're doing, how professional they are. When that truck would stop, they turned it in a certain way to make sure vehicles didn't pass. And the women and and the, uh, yeah, the the firefighters would get out, get out of the truck and make sure everyone was safe, including the. The kids, Santa Claus, jingles, jingles, that was the opposite there, to make it, but their professionalism, the way they operate. Is just amazing, if you can see the way Bert handles that big truck on down these narrow streets and then backing it up and getting out of those spots. It was amazing and and our 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 latest part, Toby. Got, uh, was able to get some experience driving the truck, see what he need to, you know, protect our borough. So I just want to make that, uh, Michelle and the staff are working on that budget. You know, I read it in the binder, I see it here, we've been seeing it for the past couple of months. Amazing job how we were able to get through, are you able to get through that? And and council working on it, everybody pitching on, it's just a tre- a tremendous job. Um, the other thing I wanted to say was, we do have a Facebook page, if you have access to Facebook. Um, we try to periodically post pictures and what's going on in the borough. The latest round was obviously Santa Claus when he made his visit, so we try to get some of those pictures up there. Um, so if you can get on there and, you know, see what's going on. And that's one of the things we do through the Facebook, through Savvy Citizen, is to communicate with our residents. Things like was mentioned earlier, that Santa was coming to town, so that you're able to be out and and be prepared for when something's happening in the borough. And other than wishing everyone a happy holiday, I'm done.
Well, can I just say one thing, you know what else was nice, if they felt the kids coming, there were so many residents that just came out just to say hi and. Oh, Santa, thank you for the, thank you for the vote, and I thought, that was the part of her. But I just thought that was really nice too, that there were so many people that just came out to say hi to us. You know?
And that's your record.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now. Between me and you going out. Uh, so I I will begin by by, I'm going to be general things. That everybody would benefit, everybody would think that it's kind of the festive holiday season. I will point out, uh, as we talk about the holiday season, that we're a community of many faiths. Hey, that my daughter is waiting for me to come home, so that we can have our fifth night of Hanukkah. Uh, patiently waiting, uh, like a candle that really is, is facing prayer, really to just get some gifts. But also that we have many faces in our community that's part of, really what's what's made us such a wonderful community. You know, I, uh, after that, I've been seated as president and for council for about seven, I've got eight years now. And this could certainly be the last day that I sit in the seat as president. Uh, I won't seek it, nor do I think I will seek it again, and that's mostly because over the last few years. You know, my health really hasn't allowed me to do the things the way that I have in the past. And I think the council has really stepped up, uh, and handled that in a way that that I really, I commend all of you for. Uh, having said that, I think a couple of things should be noted during that time, so I was looking at this. That's what I said, Dick, I should tell you a bit, you know, you know, you know what this seat is, I think you may be the one person who knows it longer. Uh, than than I, you know. For for clarity, just on my on my time with council, you know, you realize I've seen three chiefs. Four borough managers now, including the new one, right? And two different mayors, right, seventeen different council people, right? You know, three federal reps, three state reps, right, I say all that, one Ralph. This community is special. And I have been able to have a special role in it in the seat. What I would say to my fellow council members as we move forward into the new year. All of the time that I sat in the seat, I've done it with a lot of different kind of characters. Some were yellers, like real yellers, right, not gonna mention their names, but. You know, some were were very quiet, um. You know, we do a really good job of working on that half of the community, right? In my time, I've seen over six point five million dollars. Coming to this community and working with our state federal reps, right? And that's things that have gone through our development spaces, that we've moved from credit, those are the things that have come from our state rep. Right, to our state, our state senator Jay Cotton's been an amazing partner with 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 me during that time. Uh, and so I hope we're able to continue the relationship building. Because one of the most important things that Churchill should be known for. Right, is that we're the kind of community that works well with others. We're the kind of new community that has integrity, right, that we have the kind of discipline and understanding. I don't want to be one of those things that I've seen it, right? Where where the council, the community start praying, they start arguing, right? So I am, I think that that there's no question, right, in looking at the direction, that it's time for a new direction in leadership. You know, I look forward to what that looks like, uh, but I think it is without question, uh, my last time. I told my daughter, she was very upset. Uh, she was not upset because, by the way, uh, she thought, you know, what will happen to Churchill? You know, I think care less, she was upset because she liked probably her friends that her dad is the president. But it's not a reason, right? But there was a lot of things that we have worked on and will continue to work on. Uh, and I I just hope that as we move forward in twenty twenty four, that we do this in in a way that is back when I started. Right, when I first came on the council, and I was gonna try and wear the suit that I wore, that I wore when I first came on the council. It turns out, right, from from like, you know, fourteen years ago, doesn't fit. The mentality has. Right, the idea of who we are in the community has changed. And I hope that the idea of who we are in the council has changed. Uh, so with that, I thank everybody for their time, I think, uh. You know, I want everyone to have a wonderful holiday and, uh, I would ask for motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna stand up first.